We'd like to call this evening's special meeting of the City Council to order. Welcome, members from the media that are here. Madam Clerk, the council microphones are open for roll call.
Mayor Artis, Councilmember Aikerson, Councilmember Seer, Councilmember Grab, Councilmember Jensen, Councilmember Montalongo, Councilmember Moore, Councilmember Euler, Councilmember Rigenbach, Councilmember Ruckregel, and Councilmember Turner.
President.
You have a quorum present, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We'd like to invite everyone to join us and stand for a moment in silent prayer or silent reflection, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Madam Clerk.
Our first order of business is to hold a public hearing regarding the ordinance levying a special service area real estate tax in the amount of $85,000 for the tax year 2018 for the Westlake Special Service Area.
We have a motion to open the public hearing by Councilwoman Jensen, seconded by Councilman Euler. Please cast your ballots to open the public hearing. That motion passes unanimously. So, first call, public hearing regarding the ordinance levying a special service area real estate tax in the amount of $85,000 for the tax year 2018 for the Westlake Special Service Area. First call. Councilman Montalongo.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The petitioner is here and would like to say a few words.
Mayor, members of the council, my name is Chris Oswald. I'm an attorney for Miller Hall &amp; Triggs, who represents the petitioner, Westlake Shopping Center. As you're aware, each year we come here and set the real estate tax levy on the center. It has been an annual process since the adoption of the initial SSA out there for the parking lot and street improvements in that area. And this year is no different in looking toward the expectations for next year. We get together with Morton Community Bank, who's the lender, and set what we believe to be an appropriate real estate tax levy on the center, which is paid by the property owner. And that is the $85,000. It's explained more in your council communication. And we are happy to answer any questions that you might have of us.
Does anyone have a question for council? Okay, seeing none, thank you very much. Second call, anyone who would like to address the council in this public hearing. Third and final call, public hearing regarding the ordinance levying a special service area real estate tax in the amount of $85,000 for the tax year 2018 for the Westlake Special Service Area. Seeing no one additional, we have a motion to close the public hearing. Councilwoman Jensen, seconded. Councilman Euler, please cast your ballots to close the public hearing. That motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk.
We're at the township portion of the agenda. 18-351 is a request to adopt an ordinance levying and assessing taxes for the fiscal year beginning April 1, 2018, and ending March 31, 2019, for the town of the city of Peoria for the Town General Fund and Illinois Municipal Retirement Fund in the amount of $658,658.
Thank you. Trustee Grab.
Mr. Chairman, I move for approval.
Okay, motion to approve, seconded by trustee Turner. Is there any discussion on this item? Trustee Jensen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just had a basic question about this levy, and it's related to the amount that goes into the municipal retirement fund. Is that, do you know for how many employees that is for? I believe it's just one, but I just want to make that information for the public.
Somebody from the township.
Sorry, I didn't see, I didn't know if, thank you, Mr. Abner.
It's eight employees.
So, all eight employees participate in the IMRF?
Yes.
Okay. And that's a, what's the total amount? I think I, I saw it on here, but...
The total amount for the whole budget or just the retirement?
No, just for the, the contribution to the IMRF fund.
It's $96,000.
Okay, thank you.
Any additional questions on this item? Seeing none, we have a motion in a second. Please cast your ballots. That motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk.
18-352 is a request to adopt an ordinance levying and assessing taxes for fiscal year beginning April 1, 2018, and ending March 31, 2019, for the General Assistance Fund for the town of the city of Peoria in the amount of $1,173,235.
Thank you. Trustee Grab.
Mr. Chairman, I move for approval.
Motion to approve, seconded by trustee Turner. Any discussion on this item? Trustee Jensen.
Thank you, Mr., I guess trustee, or Mr. Chair. I have one question, Mr. Abner. I commend you. I know that you've made a real effort to lower expenses and overhead at the office. So, I'm just wondering, because that information isn't in our pa, in our report, the amount that we're levying for the General Assistance Fund is $1.173 million. Do you know how that compares to the, to last year, or the last two or three preceding years? Is it about the same?
No. This year it's $392,000 less.
Okay. And, and then as a follow-up to that, has it been, it's been decreasing over the years? Is that right?
Not, the years I've been here, this is the first decrease we've had since I've taken office.
Does that mean that we'll have almost $400,000 less available for general assistance?
We're, we're taking that out of our reserves to, I felt our reserves were about a couple of months, a little bit heavy, so we're reducing our reserves.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Trustee Grab.
And Township Supervisor Abner, we had quite an interesting and lengthy conversation about this move. And there was much discussion among the township officials as to whether or not this would take care of the neediest among us, and whether it was prudent to dip this far into reserves. So, this proposal coming to you tonight was not without much discussion and debate. If you'd like to elaborate a little bit on that?
Absolutely. I had discussed that with all the elected officials from the township and felt that none of the services were going to be jeopardized at all. I would, that's the last thing I would ever do, is jeopardize our client's services. And I just felt it was my obligation to the taxpayers also. We had a, there was, I felt a little heavy on the reserves, and we're putting them where I think they need to be. And I felt all the elected officials were right on board with that.
Thank you very much.
Thought it was a win-win for everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any additional questions or discussion on this item? We have a motion in a second. Please cast your ballots. That motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk.
And now, we're at the city portion of the agenda. 18-353 is a request from the Fireman's Pension Fund Board of Trustees regarding the municipal compliance report, and this is a request to receive and file.
Mr. Manager, did you want to comment on these next two items before we vote, or Finance Director?
No, the, these are directly from the fire pension fund and the police pension fund. I don't know if the city treasurer does serve on either of those boards. Maybe he might have a few words that he might want to share, just...
This is to be compliant with state statute, and this is really a reflection of what you're currently budgeting for this next year, to be compliant with the minimal state statute, to be 90% funded by 2040. And so, as a request that this comes forward at the time in which you are seeking to set the levies.
Okay, thank you. Is there a motion? Motion to approve, Councilman Rigenbach, seconded by Councilman Turner. Discussion, Councilmember Jensen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I've just got a few questions, some, and some things I wanted to highlight. I note that our investments, the investments in the firefighter pension fund is up by quite a bit, by, it looks like 11 thou, is that right? 11 million? I just want to clarify for the public, the city has no control over what, how the money's invested, and where it's invested, right? That's set by the pension board. Correct?
Yes.
Okay. The other question I have is related to, the, I note here, it says the number of active members for this proceeding fiscal year is 190, with our, with the proposed budget to eliminate 18 positions. I'm assuming then that'll, that number will decrease, and wondering if that will have an impact?
Lower your normal costs. It doesn't lower your ongoing accrued liabilities in the future, because that dealt with losses, et cetera, over the many, many years that we still then have to seek to fund and balance by the year 2040 to be 90% funded.
Okay, so that, the, the loss of 18 active members shouldn't have...
It, it would be so minimal to the whole 139 million, almost 140 million dollar, pretty small amount.
Okay. And, and connected to that, I'm wondering, I see the number of regular retirement pensions that, that went through last year and the amount dispersed, and then the total, and just wondering again, and the answer may be the same, but since a number of employees are taking early retirement, will that have any impact on, I'm, I'm assuming that'll increase the amount we have to distribute next year, and...
Yes, we have what they call a mature plan, which means we have more beneficiaries receiving pensions than are paying into the system. And so, having long-term liabilities is consistent with other plans of nature where you have more people that are retired than are working.
Okay, so, that, that higher number shouldn't have much of an impact as well?
Again, to that total of 140 million dollars, it's still relatively small, but it does increase one's liability in the future, out years, yes.
If I could intercede, I think that one of the, the bigger factors that's at play, if you look at, at page two, in the current year, they made 14.52% in investment returns. That was a good year. The prior year, they only made 5%. And, you know, ultimately, if the, if the fund itself, or the, the pension board itself is able to see returns above the 6.75% investment rate, then that's good. If, since they only made 5% the preceding fiscal year, that 1.75% that they didn't make, the taxpayer has to make that up. So, that's why it's important that they have, and we've talked about this before, that legislatively, we try and give them that investment authority so that they're able to get a higher return on the money that they're investing.
As a follow-up to that, do we know why it was so much higher? I mean, did they make substantial changes in their investment, I'm assuming? I mean, it's quite a hop.
The markets in 2017 were very favorable towards investors, and so, this report is based on the 2017 year, year selected in 2019, so 18's not even here, so it projects forward with the corrections that have taken place in the market this year. Either pension fund will probably be lucky to squeeze out any kind of positive returns, but we've got a few weeks left of the market.
Okay, thank you.
Councilman Seer.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just one or two quick questions. Mr. Nikteen, what is the investment objective for this sum of money? What is the investment objective for this sum of money?
Well, the, under state statute, the maximum we can put in, based on the size of our fund, is 65% equity, 35% fixed income. And when we're put under that situation, and let me compare that to IMRF, which you have the prudent person rule, that allows the IMRF board to invest in the whole range of financial activities of which the fire and police pension fund cannot. And then you know, Councilman Seer, what bond funds are doing right now. Most of them are negative. Fortunately, our bonds, because we purchase individual bonds rather than a bond fund, and we're at around a 1% return. So, when you have 35% of 140 million dollars, only producing 1%, that's not a great return. And when we give our retirees a 3% COLA, and all of this is based on state law, this board has no ability to change any part of that.
So, based on your, based on your answer, would it be fair for me to say that the investment objectives about, would be qualified on their growth and income portfolio, roughly?
We, we have investments in the full range of, from the 500 index, to growth funds, to value funds, to small cap, to large cap, to foreign investments. So, we operate within the confines of how the state statute is defined.
I'm sure we have very qualified people that are looking at this, but my concern is on the growth and income portfolio, the last 10 years, the market gave you back about 4.9%. And to me, it looks like it's pretty high, at 6.5. I, I just, I mean, I got, we got, I know we have no say into what's going on, but I'm just curious why they gave themselves such a high goal at 6.5, when their objective is growth and income.
Well, and again, I think this is the reason why myself and others have advocated before the legislature to try to get us the prudent person rule, and it will be again before your legislative agenda when you meet with the area legislators. We know if a 1% return on 140 million dollars equates to about a $20 million, whether positive or negative, to your returns. So, 1% is huge dollars when you're looking at 140 million. So, we have asked the legislature, and we will continue to ask, to allow the board to make the financial decisions that are in the best interest of the board, its members, as well as the taxpayers. And in doing so, the pressure that you all feel, and the taxpayers feel, we can bring about equitable return. But when we've put such restrictions on these funds, there's only one place to make it up, as the city manager has outlined. And you have a terrible, challenging task, as do we. Other people do not have these restrictions. This is the reason why we continue to talk about what we need to do to challenge these things. Changing it to a prudent person rule will not cost this body money, and we will be operating under the same rules as a fiduciary, because we are, and we want the highest rates of return.
If you lower the assumed interest return, the assumed investment return, to 5%, the taxpayer has to make up the difference in terms of, of contributing more to meet the, the benefit payouts. Because what you're saying is that, remember, it comes from three places. There's three pots that paying the $13 million of benefit payments comes from. It comes from the employees, that's set by state law and it can't change. It's a fixed percentage of their pay. It comes from the investment returns made by this pension board. So, if you lower that investment return down, it just means that the taxpayer then has, that has the third pot, has to put in more in order to make these benefit payments. And that's, that's one of the issues. If you lower the discount rate, if you lower that assumed investment return down, you're asking the taxpayers to pay more.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Any other additional discussion on this item? We have a motion in a second to receive and file. Please cast your ballots. That motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk.
18-354 is a communication from the Police Pension Fund Board of Trustees regarding the municipal compliance report with a request to receive and file.
Same item on the police side. We have a motion to approve. Actually, a motion to receive and file, Councilman Rigenbach, seconded, Councilmember Seer. Discussion on this item. Councilwoman Jensen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to note for the public that our contribution, which is set by state statute, is 12 million dollars, over 12 million dollars in this fund for this past year. Is that right? Mr. Nikteen.
The, there was the, according to Illinois Department of Insurance, is the funding level in which we are paying, and that's to meet the minimal statutory requirement, which is 90%, which is $11,462,938.
And, and we're actually contributing about a million dollars over that, 1.5 million? Is that right?
No. That, that there is the recommendation of the pension board, which would be to be funded at 100% by 2040, with different assumptions than that which is set out by the Department of Insurance.
So, the pension board's recommended amount is 1.5 million dollars higher than the statutory requirement?
The pension board's recommendation is approximately 1.1 million dollars more than the city's recommendation.
Okay. Also, I just want to note, this one also had much higher returns in investment over this last year, and it's, am I right, that it's $13 million increased over the preceding fiscal year?
Investment return in 2017 was 13.97%.
So, it was much higher the year before? It was only 5.69%?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Any additional discussion on this item? We have a motion in a second to receive and file. Please cast your ballots. That motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk.
18-355 is a request to adopt an ordinance authorizing the final distribution of funds from the North Side Riverfront Redevelopment Project area and dissolving the special tax allocation fund.
Councilwoman Moore.
I move for approval.
Okay, motion to approve, seconded by Councilmember Turner. Discussion on this item. Councilwoman Jensen.
Thank you. Just, again, I just want to reiterate how supportive I am of this action that the council's going to take tonight. I'm very glad I've been, that we are going to distribute the funds, since this TIF is expiring, rather than shifting it... than shifting it to another TIF. I look forward to having a policy session early next year, like we talked about, and I'm hoping that the city will make this one of our ongoing, regular policies, to continue to shut down the TIFs and return it to the taxing bodies. So, I enthusiastically support this.
Any other discussion on this item? Seeing none, please cast your ballots. That motion is enthusiastically supported unanimously. Madam Clerk?
18-356 is a request to adopt an ordinance levying a special service area real estate tax in the total amount of $148,060 against the specified parcels as described in Exhibit A for the tax year 2018 for the Knoxville Junction Special Service Area.
Councilman Reganbach?
Move for the approval?
Okay, motion to approve, seconded by Councilmember Akison. Is there discussion on this item? Councilman Reganbach?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is the mechanism that was used to create the, as I'm sure you've all read, the intersection there at what's now Donovan Park and into Junction City on the south side of the shopping center. This is paid for by the developer, and just another great example of Mr. Kazam's dedication and commitment to this part of town, so I appreciate your support.
Thank you. Additional discussion? Councilwoman Jensen?
Thank you. And I support this, and the use of the SSA, I think it's a very good tool that we can use to help spur development and support development. I just want to clarify, so the public understands, this is something that we're required to do each year pursuant to the redevelopment agreement that we approved in June of 2015? Is that right?
That's correct, and this is only property taxes levied on the Knoxville Junction, within the Knoxville Junction SSA. So, it's the parcels that receive the benefit of that, having that interchange that was built and the signal that was put in place.
And then, but they're just required to come every year for us to adopt a new levying ordinance?
So that they can pay the debt of that special service area improvement that was made, yes.
And as a reminder, how long does this period for this SSA go?
10 years. I think this one might be 10 years, so.
They'll still have to come back each year?
Until the debt is exhausted.
Okay, thank you.
Any further discussion on this item? We have a motion in a second. Please cast your ballots. The motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk?
18-360, a request to adopt an ordinance levying a special service area real estate tax in the amount of $85,000 for the tax year 2018 for the Westlake Special Service Area.
Councilman Montalongo?
Motion to approve?
Motion to approve, seconded by Councilmember Akison. Discussion on this item. Councilwoman Jensen?
Mr. Mayor, I just want to reiterate that this also is similar to the item that we approved, this special service area real estate taxes pursuant to a redevelopment agreement, is that right? That we agreed to four years ago?
Yes, I believe so.
Okay, thank you.
Any further discussion on this item? Seeing none, please cast your ballots. That motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk?
18-357 is a request to adopt an ordinance abating the tax levied to pay principal of an interest on general obligation corporate purpose bonds for the city of Peoria as outlined, and I'd like to call your attention to a replacement ordinance that is on yellow on your desk.
Thank you, Mr. Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. What you have in front of you is the ordinance that abates property taxes for bonds that we have issued. As part of this, we're not abating all of those property taxes. Since 2015, we have been levying an amount of property taxes that we then utilize other revenues that would have been paying these bonds off to pay for road improvements. And so, that's roughly $2 million that we have of this. And then, there's also the property taxes that are levied to pay the library bonds for the improvements to our library system. So, all of this totals about $4.4 million, a little more than $4.4 million. The green, or the yellow, excuse me, communication is simply clarifying, we did not include in the original version, the library debt that was part of the 2018 bonds that we issued, and this reflects, this amended copy reflects that change that's included there, and we'd be happy to answer any questions.
Can we get a motion on the floor? Motion to approve, Councilman Reganbach, seconded. Did I hear that? Councilmember Jensen. Discussion, Councilman Grab. Okay, thank you. Discussion. Seeing none, please cast your ballots. The motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk?
18-349 is a request to adopt an ordinance amending Article VII and creating Article 18 of Chapter 27 of the Code of the City of Peoria, providing for the regulation and taxation of alcoholic liquor sold at retail establishments.
Mr. Manager?
Thank you. The item before you, and the next item after this, are the two new revenue fees, revenues that we have included as part of the budget. This item in front of you is the 2% package liquor tax that would be added to any purchase of alcohol at retail that would be brought home for home consumption. The ordinance has been amended to reflect, to integrate it into our city code, and to tie in directly with other ordinances that we have in place with that, and we'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have. This would generate $700,000, we're estimating annually.
Is there a motion? Councilwoman Akison, motion to approve, seconded by, seconded by Councilmember Euler. Discussion. Seeing none, please cast your ballots. That motion passes with nine ayes and two noes, voting no, Councilmembers Moore and Ruckregel. Madam Clerk?
18-341 is a request to adopt an ordinance creating Article 18, the Public Safety Pension Fee of Article 18, Licenses and Miscellaneous Business Regulations of the Code of the City of Peoria.
Mr. Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. This is the second fee that we have proposed as part of the budget. In proposing this fee, we have included for 2019, proposed revenues that would, or a proposed fee structure that would generate about $1.226 million in revenue. This is a parcel fee that is billed on the size of the structure on that parcel. If there is no structure on that property, the fee is set at $10. If the structure is 2,000 square feet or less, the charge is $25. If the size of that structure is between 2,000 and 5,000 square feet, that fee is $30. If that parcel size is, or, excuse me, the structure size is between 5,000 and 10,000 square feet, that increases to $100. And then, any structure that is over 10,000 square feet would be charged $200. Those fees escalate in years 2020 through 2023, bringing in $1.56 million in 2020, $1.887 million in 2021, $2.2 million in 2022, and $2.5 million in 2023. This would be, in addition to the property taxes, these funds would be collected solely for offsetting the cost of public safety pensions. As we look at 2019, as you saw in the previous compliance reports, the amount needed to cover police pensions in 2019 is $11,462,918. The amount needed to cover fire pensions is $10,260,050, of which, you will have, $16.9 million will come from property taxes, and then you'll have $3.4 million that would come from personal property replacement taxes. The remainder of making up that payment for pensions would come from this fee. Over time, over that next four years, as we look at the escalating cost of public safety pensions, that cost is going to exceed the amount of money that this fee would generate, that property taxes would generate, and that personal property replacement taxes would generate. That will necessitate that at some point in time in the future, we're going to have to transfer more money out of the general fund, out of the operating budget, to cover those public safety pension costs. Looking at it over the next five years, we're looking at about a $14 million transfer just to continue to make the payments that we need to make for public safety purposes. So, this fee only goes so far. We're still going to have to come back and try and balance this budget in the out years as we look at that, so.
Thank you. Is there a motion? Start the discussion. Councilmember Reganbach, motion to approve, seconded by Councilman Turner. Thank you. Discussion. Councilman Grab.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Manager, under financial impact, I think on the first page of the document, we're still missing a zero there. Yes, my apologies. Now, even if we garner $1.2 million by passing this tonight, it still is a budget, unless we have some other revenue blueprints brought forward, that cuts how many firefighter and police positions?
So, as part of the proposed operating budget, this would include the reduction, or the decommissioning of two rescue squads in the fire department, with a corresponding reduction of 18 positions in the fire department. In the police budget, we currently have about 16 vacant positions. We know that next year, we only have five slots available in January to go to the police training academy. We also know that in mid-year, we have another five slots that will be open. So, the real effect will be that we'll have eight or nine empty positions in the police department all year long. So, from a public safety standpoint, we'll have 18 fewer firefighter positions, and throughout 2019, probably eight to nine fewer police officer positions during the course of the year.
Even if we pass this?
Even if you pass this.
If we have a $1.2 million hole in our budget because we don't pass this, as popular or unpopular as it may be, what then happens if we don't fill in?
Well, you'll have two options available to you. The two options that are available to you would be, one, you could amend the property tax levy, which comes up here in, I think it's the next item that's up on the agenda, which you could amend that, and instead of having a parcel fee that was set up, or a public safety pension fee is designed like this, you could raise property taxes. A six-cent property tax increase would cover that same $1.2 million. That's something that you could look at. If you don't want to do that, then we're left with the other option, which is to go back to the table and look at additional expense cuts that we would have to make to balance this budget.
And what would those expense cuts mean if nobody wanted to raise the sum of money in some particular iteration, or form, or permutation, or whatever you want to say? How much deeper then are we going now into public safety?
I think what we'd be looking at is you'd be looking at at least another 12 to 15 positions that we'd have to cut throughout the organization. Where those are, I'd probably want some time to be able to come back to you and make a recommendation, but I don't know.
It would almost certainly be mostly public safety.
Probably, I mean, we would certainly have to start to look at public safety cuts. That's where two-thirds of our employee base is, is sitting in public safety right now. So, that's something we would certainly have to look at.
Be cutting even deeper?
We would have to cut even deeper.
Into the number of firefighters we have in the city and police officers?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion on this item? Councilwoman Moore?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I asked the city manager to provide for me the number of nonprofit organizations in the first district that would be impacted by this parcel fee. And I have it, fortunately, you guys don't have it, but of the 125, when I scroll through the list of 125, what I see in my district are a lot of small churches and organizations that, although small, in, by some folks' estimation, the amount that would be levied against them, for some of them, it's quite taxing, no pun intended. And I was trying to remember how we got to a parcel fee, and who were we trying to, who were we trying to address in this fee? And I don't think it was these small, I'll call them mom and pop, for the most part in my district at least, organizations who are struggling to survive now, and I wonder how some of them will take this hit, especially because some of the folks who are attending these churches are also being impacted in other areas of our budget. And so, from what I hear, from what the city manager says, it really doesn't matter if we did this or not, it's not going to, what did you say, Mr. Manager? It's not going to take us out of, if we didn't do this, we still would have to make additional cuts. If we did do this...
If you don't adopt this fee, you're going to have to cut, if there's no appetite for additional revenue from the council, you're going to have to cut $1.2 million more in order to balance the budget, in order to put $2 million into the general fund, in order to make your pension payments, in order to live within the policies that you've laid out, it would necessitate either $1.2 million of another revenue source, or $1.2 million of cuts, over and above what we've already proposed.
So, thank you for that. So, recently, I don't know if everybody received it, but I received in the mail from an organization here in Peoria, big glossy card indicating that citizens should talk to us and impress upon us not to impact, to instill, enact this fee. And I've got a lot of people, who I'm sure all of you must have received calls, and letters, and texts, and emails, and at the grocery store, and at church, that feel this is going to be onerous on many of them. So much so that, in my district, I won't be able to support it because of that. My community is very fragile, and when I talk about my community, mostly I'm talking about the North Valley and the South Side. And anyone that paid attention to the stock market today, probably noticed that the warehouse district and some folks in the downtown probably started wondering what's going on, and even they're talking, floating the "R" word out there, which we're not ready to claim that yet. So, we come down to some difficult decisions, and for me, this one was easy enough that I won't be able to support it. Thank you.
Councilman Reganbach?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is one of those votes that really, you see so much logic on both sides. I hear and appreciate the comments from Councilwoman Moore, the things Councilman Grab just mentioned about additional cuts to our public safety are something that weigh heavy on us, and I think it's ironic, or serendipitous, is that the word I want? I think it's ironic or serendipitous, is that the word I want, that tomorrow's going to be the funeral for former President George H.W. Bush. If you remember in 1990, as he was negotiating the budget with Congress, he ended up acquiescing and approving a tax cut, even though he had run on the platform of no new taxes, a tax hike, excuse me. That set the stage for a decade of prosperity, if you will, in the '90s. It set the stage for the first balanced budget that the United States government had in the post-war war history, and it cost them the next election. But tomorrow, I would venture to say that the eulogies will hear about George H.W. Bush, is what a leader he was, and one willing to make the tough decisions for the long term. This isn't the panacea to our pension problems, but between the cuts and the structural changes that are being made, between the revenues that we have and anticipate, I really believe we're making that first step. And as hard as it is being a father and a husband with five kids, three in college to tax myself, for the future of the city, I don't think we have another choice. Thank you.
Councilmember Jensen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Great comments, Councilman Regenbach. You make a very good point, and I know it's a tough decision, but I can't support this fee. I'm not in favor of eliminating more jobs. I would hope the council would consider some of the alternative proposals that I've made, including if we were to reduce the amount to the reserve fund in half, that would be almost the full $1.2 million, it would be $1 million, or a combination of a number of the other proposals I've made, including reducing the contribution in half to the Peoria Area Convention and Visitors Bureau, and eliminating the municipal band. I think we have other alternatives than implementing another fee, especially at the same time, in the same year that we've implemented a stormwater utility fee on everyone. I know it's bad timing, and there aren't any good choices, but I will not support this fee. Thank you.
Councilmember Agasson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I certainly appreciate all the comments, and I also do not want to see any more fees, any more taxes. I've had lots of emails and conversations about this particular issue, and there's a void in what kind of communication we're getting. And the void is, what is the alternative that is actually going to get us in the place we need to be? I understand some council members have been making speeches around town, saying that we need to live within our means. What does that actually mean? I'd like to know what that means specifically. The alternatives that Councilwoman Jensen mentions, they still don't factor in the costs associated with that, cutting the Convention and Visitors Bureau. What does that, what would that mean as far as the ramifications of that? Even if we vote this down, and I'm inclined to do so, then what does that mean? Who will be cut? What are the consequences? When you go through these numbers, even with what city manager Eurek said, this isn't enough. We are looking at a tsunami of obligations that we are kicking down the road. We're not making any specific recommendations to him beyond, we don't want to raise taxes, we don't want to raise fees, we don't want to cut employees. We want the scale to be balanced, and it can't be. We're not in a position to do that. Now, if we could make the city a place that people were coming to, to start businesses, to spend money, to increase the demographics so that there was much more discretionary income, we could lower our property taxes, which is what affluent cities in this state do. But if you have demographics that don't have any discretionary money, where they're just eking out a living, where they're just basically paying their grocery bills and trying to get their water to flow and their heat on, we're not, that's the big, that's the big gap. So, it's easy to sit here as politicians and kind of wax on and wax off about, I don't want to support this, and I can't do this, and whatever. I'm running for office in April. This is not an easy thing. It's not a political thing to do. I don't think this is perfect, and I ask, I'm the one that asked the city manager to come back with other alternatives. This, I wish we were being televised tonight. I don't know where the camera's looking at this. This is erroneous, false information. This was put out by the Illinois Association of Realtors, paid for by them, to encourage people to contact us. I talked to the IT department today. We've been contacted by 2,500 people. That is great citizen involvement. Yahoo! Good work! And if you're listening, Illinois Association of Realtors, I used to be a fee-paying member of that group, but I resent this. This is erroneous, not factual. It starts with, what will this cost you? $50 per home per year. That's false. This is fake news. I wish the Illinois Association of Realtors would take on some causes that their national association takes on, which is walkability, folks. And I don't know which camera I'm supposed to be talking in. I hope that this is recorded, but walkability will make it easier for people with less discretionary money to save money on their auto, their car, their insurance. But guess what? They've never once reached out for that. And furthermore, this is something they're against. I want to hear what they're for. I want to see these people come to the table with some sort of solutions to this tsunami of obligation we have in the future. Now, I talked with Councilman Regenbach earlier today, and I thought he had a really good suggestion, and I'm going to yield the floor because I'm sure I'm out of my time. But maybe he could discuss that, and that might be more of a palatable option for the rest of the council members.
Councilman Regenbach?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As the manager was discussing the flow that's going to be produced by this, this isn't going to be the panacea, as I said previously, there's going to continue to be issues, the pension obligation, the tsunami, that very nice choice of words there, Councilwoman, is something that needs to be addressed. We've heard from 2,500 people that the Realtors Association got riled up. We've heard from the BizPAC people. We've heard from the Chamber people. But you know what? It's a little bit unfortunate that they come at the 11th hour, just as we're ready to cast the vote and say, don't do it. We started these discussions months ago, and we had a very publicly noticed meeting at the Riverfront Museum in September, that the manager asked us to throw out any ideas at all that we had on how to balance this budget, cuts, revenues, waving a magic wand, whatever. So, what I've been talking about today with some of my colleagues, and what I think it would be an interesting way to look at this, is to put this out there as a three-year fee with a sunset provision, and in February, January, February, March, as soon as the new year passes, we reach out to these people who are telling us that we're doing it all wrong, and ask them to tell us how to do it right. But we have a commission established with the BizPAC people, with the Realtors, with those business owners here in Peoria that are concerned about this. It's ironic, on that same flyer, it says something about, homeowners shouldn't be asked to balance the budget. Well, ladies and gentlemen, the budget is, the budget is what we all pay in taxes. That's how cities and municipalities function. Our obligation is to make sure we're spending that money wisely, to make sure that we're getting the most bang for the buck, but we have to pay for it. It doesn't help when the legislators in Springfield pass these unfunded mandates continually to us, and one after another, they pile up, and then we're the ones who are the bad guys because we have to pay the piper. As our, my former, my predecessor, Bob Manning, he used to hold up the dollar bill and show, Mr. Scraggins, what's the latest number? Are we at 12 cents on the dollar? On every dollar you pay in property taxes, the city of Peoria gets 12 cents. So, when you talk about how high your property taxes are, you should be looking at the other 88 cents and asking how they're spending their money as well. Get 2,500 people to send emails to those taxing bodies, because we represent a very small portion of that. We're not perfect. We're not perfect, but I'll be darned, every single one of my colleagues around here has been looking at this every which way but up, or whatever you say, trying to figure out the right way to find that Solomon wisdom that we need to do this. I contend this is the first step. It's a baby step, and I would, is there a motion on the floor? I would move, well, who made that?
You did.
Did I make it? I would amend my motion that there's a three-year sunset on this with the understanding there will be a commission established to review all of the revenue sources that the city collects and the pension obligation that we have from Springfield.
Second to the motion, is okay with that, Councilman Turner? Okay. As amended? So, the discussion is on the amended motion. I had Councilman Turner next.
My turn. Thank you very much, Your Honor. I appreciate it. And I guess I've given this a lot of thought. I've been trying to keep my mouth shut, but tonight is not about politics. I want you to think about that. It's about where each and every one of us stands when it comes to the time to make the hard decisions. This is what we all ran for. I want to be involved in government so I can make those decisions that I need to make to make government continue to function. You know, I know no one around this horse you probably remembers it, but four years ago, when we were having tough times, I mentioned, I said, guys, let's get used to it, because this is what I call the new normal. We're going to have to deal with this from now on. It ain't going to be just this year, and it's going to go away. I don't expect the economy to turn around in a significant manner that's going to affect municipalities for a long time. And ladies and gentlemen, we're going to have to deal with this. Whether you want to do it or not, you've got to do those things that's going to keep us functioning each and every day. And if you don't want to do that, we don't need to be sitting here. Damn politics, it doesn't make any difference. But we don't need to be sitting here if we're not going to make the tough decisions. So, we've run out of options, and the bottom line is, is that I didn't want to support this either, but it was kind of ironic because Councilman Regenbach came in, and I hadn't talked to him since the last meeting, and he had the same idea I had about this public safety deal, about a sunset clause. So, we've run out of options, and ladies and gentlemen, I got to support this, and I hope many of you do too, or we're going to be talking about this budget right around Christmas time or after Christmas time. We're still going to be talking about it. Thank you very much, Your Honor.
Unfortunately, we don't have until after Christmas time. Councilmember Sears next.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As the 5th District Councilman, I just can't support this motion. The people I do represent in the 5th District that are my constituent, the businesses in the 5th District, I have an industrial park in the 5th District, I have retirees that are on fixed income. This idea, which is not a bad idea, but unfairly put a burden on my people in the 5th District. There's bigger houses in the 5th District. I mean, we already pay more than our fair share in the 5th District. Everybody knows that, through property taxes, sales taxes, fees, business fees. I mean, we have two and a half pages of fees for businesses. I don't want to cut either, but for, I do represent the people of the 5th District, and all the calls, except for one, and I'm talking about hundreds of people I've talked to, either on the phone, emails, or in, excuse me, in person, one out of 100, couple hundreds, I mean, what's for this motion. So, it's just too much. I mean, we do have some hard decisions to make, but for me, after talking to all my people, or a lot of my people in the 5th District, I mean, to me, that's an easy decision tonight for this motion. I just can't vote for it. I mean, people on fixed income, we just got the stormwater utility fee, we just got the garbage tax. I mean, it goes on and on. I mean, we pay our fair share in the 5th District, and people have been great, and we are team players in the 5th District, but this is just too much, too fast. I'll be voting no for this motion.
Anyone who hasn't spoken first round before we go into the second round? Okay, I have Councilman Grab first.
First of all, 12 years, I had the privilege of serving as an at-large council member, and I never once thought about the next election, because I knew intuitively that the people of Peoria were smart, and that if it didn't come out in the wash, it would come out in the rinse. And to my colleague from District 5, trust me, the older sections of the city are what built the 5th District. I sit here and I vote for million-dollar-plus roads, serving businesses out in the northern corridor of the city. Here's what my day is like as 2nd District Councilman. Now I'm a district councilman, moving into the last half of my second term as a district councilman, so I've seen both beats. My day starts out with a film footage sent to me of someone trying to break into a home not too far from where we sit, caught on camera, very, very scary. Person got into an accessory structure. Few days ago, just a stone's throw away from District 2, somebody is stabbed to death in a bank parking lot. One of our police officers gets there and is fortunate enough to subdue the assailant, make an arrest, and then try, after putting the plastic gloves on, save the person's life who is bleeding to death, all by himself. These are your emergency responders, folks, at-large people running for council this spring? That's who these people are. Don't you dare talk to me about an election. That is, I guarantee you, the people of the 2nd District understand that there's nothing for free. The officials at Bradley University are wondering about their high rises with this curtailment in fire rescue services. I have to be concerned about kids at a high school in my district that also serves District 3. I have to be concerned about the senior citizen homes. I have to be concerned about codes and maintaining real estate values, which the damn Peoria Association of Realtors know nothing about, because they keep steering people out north because they get bigger commissions. I know all about them. My family was in... My family was in real estate for a generation, and as for the Chamber of Commerce, they do nothing for small business. They do not do anything for small business. They represent a bunch of fat cats. I represent people who have real needs in the neighborhoods. And when I think about what they stand to lose in terms of their property value, possibly their lives, their very lives over this, because somebody's worried about damn election, and they can't even come up with, with a plan that is better than this, it infuriates me. 18 years, I have to listen to this? This will go down in history as being one of the worst city councils I have ever served on if we make these deep cuts in public safety. That is why I asked the manager, I thought using Socratic method, what would happen if we didn't have at least the equivalency of this sum of money as unpopular as it may be right now? It won't be in the spring, or when we go on recess, or tomorrow when something blows up and we wonder, "Hey, how come things were so thin as it relates to fire rescue services or police services?" That's why I asked the manager this question. How in the world do we come up with this, fill this gap? What is your plan? What is your plan? And I'm looking at every one of you. What is your plan? And don't tell me you've got a plan because you don't have a plan. You don't have a plan with six votes. Therefore, what you have is nothing. Ancient proverb, Chinese proverb, one in the hands worth two in the bush. The next election. Thank you, Mayor.
Next, next up, I had Councilmember Agasson.
Thank you. To Councilmember Rigganbach's substitute motion for the sunset clause, um, he's proposing that we assemble a group of people from outside the horseshoe that could have a set of eyes on these, these very serious situations, where they would be able to look at how we could restructure, where we might be able to find additional revenue, they would have some time, we'd started in February. I know that the, um, the school district did this years ago, and it was quite productive. It was an opportunity for outsiders to help them scrutinize and question some of the, um, some of the ways that they were spending money, and I really do appreciate all this focus that the Illinois Association of Realtors has put on our particular portion of the tax bill. But I've, I brought my tax bill, and I've got news for these people. They need to be hounding the school district because for the amount of money, more than half your tax dollars go to support the school district, and nobody wants to be against kids. You don't want to be against kids at any, any time in their lives. So they don't, they don't get the kind of scrutiny that we get, but for the small pittance that we operate this city on, I am, I mean, it's, it's, and again, I'm going to reiterate what I said before, we're facing a tsunami that this doesn't even address, and if the city manager would help explain that so the public understands, this is just to keep the status quo going. I don't want people to get confused that this is going to help us reach that gap that we're facing, because I think some people are confused about that. And then, um, well, I have, I had one other point, but I cannot remember now what it was, and maybe it will come back to me. Thank you.
Mr. Manager, did you want to?
Oh, oh, I, I remember. Could, I do, and I, he's going to do it, um, the city manager and the, um, city attorney. A citizen recommended that perhaps it would be more palatable to put a dollar and a half fee onto something like our, the water bill, or the utility bill, or something like that, where it would actually go to people consuming water or electricity, and I thought it was, you know, a creative idea, and I talked to the city manager about it, and he was going to address why that would not be possible.
Mr. Manager.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. The, just, just real quickly, over the next five years, our anticipated payments for pensions are anticipated to be $67 million for police and $60 million for fire. Of that, $43 million will be levied from property taxes for police and 39.5 million for fire. So you, looking at then, our personal property replacement taxes, we anticipate collecting $10.8 million of PPRT revenues for police and $9.7 million for fire. That leaves you a gap of $23.4 million that needs to be filled over the next five years that in prior years has come from property taxes. But we are at the point where when we presented that to you as an option, council did not want us to go forward with the property tax. That's why we presented this fee as an alternative. This fee only generates $9 million, or 9.4 million of that 23.4 million. The remainder has to still be made up by taking money out of operations and moving it to these pension funds. So other revenues that we're, we're collecting in the general fund is going to be used to pay these costs over the next five years. So that's the impact that we have right now, and that, that's the tsunami that, that Councilwoman Agasson references. Now, to the point about the, about the, the, could we add this to the, to the garbage fee, or could we put this on the water bill as an additional fee? We think there's some legal issues with that, and I'd like to, to let Corporation Council Leist explain that.
As I said, um, we just heard of this suggestion late this afternoon. However, I, I do have some of the, some same concerns I mentioned last week, and that was relative to making a additional charge that has no bearing on what we are allegedly charging a fee for. Um, it clearly is a surcharge that has no relation to what we're collecting, a garbage fee, or a water fee, or any other kind of fee. So I, I think that's a much less defensible position, and I think it's subject to a tax pursuit, and I would not advise that. But clearly, what, what the manager has proposed, and what we have been discussing, would be the more prudent course because it applies generally to all citizens, and it's truly a fee, as opposed to, um, a surcharge on, on a fee that's wholly unrelated to that surcharge.
Mr. Manager, I don't know if you wanted to mention some of the discrepancies that we heard with a couple people, especially not-for-profits today, uh, who, I think, probably due to the, the Realtors hit piece that went out, were under an impression that their, their fee was going to be significantly higher. Did you want to address that?
Sure. I think that, that in last week's discussion, we had also talked about if we were to just impose a fee on nonprofits, what would that fee have to be to generate $1.2 million? If we were to just impose something on nonprofits, which is, as Corporation Council Leist mentioned, it's, we've got some legal concerns about being able to do that, it would have to be at about $4,000 per nonprofit. So what we've designed as far as the fee, modeling it after Danville, is something that's based on the size of the structure on the property. So it's, it's considerably less than that dollar amount that we were talking about there. So in no way, you know, that was really just kind of a math exercise of looking at what it would be. At no point had the city ever contemplated, at, at least as city staff, we had never contemplated charging nonprofits $4,000 to, to, in order to be able to generate that kind of revenue.
So, and another clarifying point is that the fee is not based on the size of the lot, it's based on the size of the structure.
Correct. This is based on the structure on that property, so it's the size of the building.
So, just for an example, the highest amount that a property owner would pay under this scenario this year for a structure of 10,000 feet up to a million feet?
$200.
Right. $200 for the largest structure in the city.
Correct.
Okay. So, I, I think it was, a lot of this was fed into, you know, some of the hype and some of the misinformation out there, but, you know, and, and if I was a not-for-profit that thought they were going to get hit with $4,000, I'd be upset too, and I'd be asking what in the world it's going to come to. And on the other end of the spectrum is, uh, and I'm not sure what the definition of mom and pop is, but if it was, if it was 2,000 square feet or less, that fee this year is?
$25.
$25 for, for the whole year?
The year.
Or if it was between 2,000 and 5,000, I'd say that's probably still maybe mom and pop. That would be?
$30.
$30 for the whole year?
The whole year.
And then, not mom and pop, but for a structure less, somewhere between that 5,000 and the 10,000 or more, so from 5,000 to 10,000, it's?
$100.
Okay. So, wow. Um, if, and I know we have a lot of people that are having a tough time out there, $25 a year, a year, um, to not have to make an additional $1.2 million in cuts to public safety? Man, those, those no new fees, no new taxes, um, for, at the, at the most, $200 a year because of a stand-in principle that we've had enough? Because next week, it's coming back with $1.2 million in cuts. $1.2 million in cuts. And it's, and it's not, it's coming from public safety, folks, that's the only place we got. So if you're upset about the reductions in, in police and fire, it's going to get $1.2 million bloodier next week because of, of the stand-in principle. So, um, it's, it's not a threat, it's the only thing we have left. And I would make the argument that city manager doesn't need our approval of what specific people to do. He's bringing us back a balanced budget. If we're not going to supply him with revenue, he's going to come back with a cut to do them. I have a few more comments I wanted to make, but I just wanted to clarify on the tail of this, this questioning on, on how much it was, that the maximum amount anybody's going to pay is $200 a year. I had Councilman Moore next.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. City Manager, we are talking about not having any options left. No one wants to cut any public service at all. The, the suggestion of the reserves, has that door been closed completely?
I, I think that's a discussion for the council.
Okay, so my point is, then it's an option. If the question of the reserves, we decided that we wanted to shore up our reserves, and we should, I, I agree with that wholeheartedly. But it sounds like we're at a point where, um, some weeks ago, many folks around the horseshoe suggested, you know, to, to stave off any cuts in public safety, that this optional amount of 2 million, uh, could be lessened. So if we're looking at 1.2 to close this gap, and we decide to perhaps only go in for half of the 2 million in reserves, well, that's 1 million right there. So there is an option. And then you said earlier that the next item on the agenda was property tax discussion, so that's not necessarily something that is attractive either, but it's an option also. So to say that there are no options on the table, there are options. It's, you know, none of them are good options, but I would like us to consider the optional. We don't have to do it, but we will, we have indicated that we want to do it, is put 2 million dollars in our reserve, and maybe now, this is the time when we look at putting only a million dollars in a reserve and rolling the other million over to cover public safety. If public safety, um, we all agree that public safety is very important. We all agree that we don't want any, to see any real cuts in public safety. So I think it's the time we start looking at this, um, million dollars out of reserve going to roll over into this area, and then funding the other 200,000. Thank you.
Councilwoman Agasson.
I appreciate what Councilwoman Moore is suggesting, however, it doesn't correct, it doesn't take care of the problem. If we take a million dollars out of reserve, a, a million dollars out of the 2 million that we have directed the city manager to put into the reserve account, then what do we do next year? And beyond next year, when we discover, as I think the Realtors, um, will say, the property values are going down, the tax assessment will go down, we'll have less money coming in from property taxes, and now we're going to be even more obligated to find more money. I mean, it's, you can't have it both ways. You can't say, "Well, I don't really want to charge anybody any more money, and I really don't want to cut anybody from the payrolls." We can't have it both ways. It's like pick your poison. And, um, I appreciate the city manager's restructuring this fee suggestion. I like the idea of a sunset. I like the idea of getting citizens involved that feel like they have, um, something to offer, and maybe expertise that, and fresh eyes. I think it's at least worth a try, and, um, and I would like to see the budget discussions start in February.
Councilmember Jensen.
Is it on? Sorry. You know, I've been proposing and suggesting the reduction of, um, the amount to the reserve fund for a number of weeks now. I'm glad to hear that Councilwoman Moore is now supportive of that. Councilwoman Moore voted against it when I proposed it, um, a number of weeks ago, so I'm glad to have her support, but I want, I'd like to know if we're not going to call the question, if there's other council people out there who would, um, consider that and vote in favor of it as an alternative. So I just, I throw that out there because I think that that is, it's not the best alternative, none of these alternatives are great, um, like we've said, but I think it's an option that we should continue to consider. So I hope that other council members are open to it as well.
Councilmember Moore.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, I was never not a Ford, but you don't put the cart before the horse in my household, and you looked at other options before you got to what can be called a nuclear option. So to characterize my support or lack of support is incorrect. So now that we are at the point where we need to look at this more closely, then now, yes, you, we can put it on the table, but you make sure everything else is taken care of before you get to the nuclear option. Now, having said that, I am, I would like to see folks in the community, not just the business owners and the, and, uh, big, those who have higher net worth involved with a discussion, but community members as well. And it's, it's just, it's unfortunate that we wait to the, we get to the point where, you know, we need to put a tourniquet on, we're going to cut you first, and then we'll put a tourniquet on with the community, with the, the conversation. You know, I, it's, uh, Councilwoman Agasson suggested we start budget discussions in February. That's not a bad idea, because we need to get ahead of this before we, on the back end in three years, come in and say, "Well, this group has decided this or that." It would have been great to get a group involved before we got to this point, but here we are. We can't go back and, and change that. So I do have a question. We're talking about three years or five years, Mr. Manager. As you indicated earlier, this is not going to cover what we need. Is that right?
That's correct.
Okay. So if it's not going to cover what we need, and we're talking about bringing what I'll call a blue-ribbon panel in to discuss it, then why three years? Why not some other amount of time?
With?
Because one, one of the things we keep saying is, you know, folks are saying, "Well, the..." Because one of the things we keep saying is, you know, folks are saying, "Well, the, the reserve is a one-off." Well, I contend this whole fee structure is a one-off, because we're only talking about, we're talking about something that clearly has been indicated is not going to provide what we need, but it can, it can stave off some of the, the pain. But at the end of the day, we, we have no idea what next year will bring as far as taxes are concerned, property tax collected. Maybe there are more, maybe there are less. Once this fee is in, can we go back in and, and if, if, let's say, you know, property taxes are more next year, can we go back in if we do a three-year and pull this back some?
Counsel always has the ability to adjust any of the fees or taxes that we have. I mean, that, that's entirely up to the council's purview. The, the budget that's been presented to you this evening that includes this fee in it, in the general fund, you're, you're putting this year 2,9818 into fund balance. In 2020, based upon the, the revenue projections that we've anticipated with, including building in property, a future property tax-based contraction, we're looking at being able to put 2.366 million dollars into fund balance in 2020. By 2021, you're not able to put 2 million dollars a year away, because you're, you're still continuing to transfer funds into the, the pension funds, and we're short 1.3 million dollars. So, this does not get you all the way there, but with this fee, your hole is only 1.3 million dollars in 2021.
Thank you.
I'm going to make a couple of comments before we go into round four. Where to begin? So, one of the largest, if not the largest lobbying group in the state decides to come out with, I'm not shy about calling it a hit piece, very inaccurate, when it's been mentioned that we're paying about 12 cents on the dollar to the city to provide police and fire, which Without any recommendations or proposals for alternate ideas on how we help get there. And I'm just curious when this group, this, the local realtors decided to show up at another board meeting of a taxing entity that is two, three, four times what our tax rate is to complain about higher taxes. At the same time, the realtors, who, who, I've had the discussion with them, so this isn't news to them, and they deny, but in general, the group drives homeowners out of the city and into adjoining school districts because, quote-unquote, "They have better Not to mention that the commissions are higher. Okay? So, you know, we can, we can do a lot of studies and show a lot of information that we have some, some of the schools in the pure public school system that outperform those other school districts on a consistent basis. So that's, that's unfortunate, and, and the, I guess the biggest part of that is, if you're going to put a, a big hit piece out like this and get everybody all riled up about it, and you have enough, you know, smart people that we want to put on a blue ribbon commission or whatever, why didn't they come forward with some ideas on how we can cover We talked about all these other ideas that came forward that nobody wanted to consider. So, part of leadership on the council is having discussion with fellow council members, expressing your ideas and getting support for them before, a minute before the vote happens. So, a lack of ability to get people to support ideas is typically when you don't do the work that a council person needs to do to get something passed. We already talked about the discrepancy in, in some of the information, in that whether it's a mom and pop, or, you know, one of these businesses, or others, the maximum amount anybody in the city can pay under this scenario, regardless of the size of their structure, the maximum amount is 200 a year. The average person's going to be paying between 30 and 100 a year to avoid additional cuts in public safety. One of the comments was that, that there's communities in the state that are doing things right and that are reducing their property taxes. My only comment to that is, with the state we live in, show me one community that is cutting property taxes, and I'll be a believer. One of the, one of the ideas that has been proposed along with this, this moratorium, or not moratorium, but sunset clause, is that we bring in, you know, some, some people to help us think about this. So one of the things that happened during the last three months of these budget discussions is that we did bring in, we brought in the BizPAC leadership, and we brought in leadership from four or five of the biggest businesses in our community, and said, "Here, here it is. Here's our budget, here's the situation we're in, these are the manager's recommendations, but we would, we would appreciate an opportunity for you to look at those, you're on the private side, what can you help us with?" Why didn't we know about it? Some people are looking for fanfare, and some people are looking for feedback and results. So I'll do the, I'll do the business community first. The business community came back and appreciated the opportunity to look at this, and they said, "Man, you guys got screwed by Springfield. I don't know how you guys get out of this." The BizPAC sent us a letter after seeing all these scenarios, why, you know, we're being saddled with the pension debt that we are. The BizPAC comes back with a really good feedback letter from supposedly smart business people with a number of recommendations. They implore us to make tough decisions that will put our community on track towards a brighter future and not kick the can down the road. Okay? I think we could, we'd probably like to do that. Number one thing that they would like us to consider in order to address the continued financial issues facing our city, do not continue, number one, do not continue to raid the general fund of our government. It's irresponsible to have such a low balance in any proposal which would not place the agreed-upon 2 million dollars in the general fund, is reckless and shortsighted. Number two, no reduction to non-union salaries without equal cuts to union employer sal, union employee salaries. So, we explained to the BizPAC that we can't arbitrarily reduce the union employee salaries because they're union employees, but that was their second idea. The third was no cuts to the CVB. We should watch their spending, but we shouldn't cut them because they bring a lot of people to town. That's, no increase in property tax because we already have one of the highest property tax rates in the entire country, and clearly it hasn't solved our budget problems. And again, this is not part of the letter, we're 12 cents. Where, where was the BizPAC to the other folks? I hope I'm not boring anybody here, but this is the, the kind of feedback from these, these, the blue ribbon people that we're looking for. Number five, reduce the amount of equipment and personnel responding to some emergency calls such as minor vehicle accidents and medical situations. And we are in the process of getting that information back. Eliminating, number six, eliminating funding to the municipal band. Number seven, no wheel tax, even if it were possible to differentiate between local delivery vehicles and internet vehicles, the small amount of revenue that would be generated by this tax would not be worth the cost to administer the tax. Another idea that got no support. Number eight, reduce the subsidy at Springdale Cemetery, or look to further outsource or privatize its operation and minimize costs. Again, we own Springdale Cemetery. Almost all of the operating dollars at Springdale Cemetery are not, are pro bono, they're volunteers. If we went to privatize it, it would cost us more. We explained that to this group before we got this letter. We have council people that don't understand, we own Springdale. Nine, do not push necessary capital repairs off just to avoid making the tough decisions now. Budget gimmicks have helped get us into this situation, and we can't keep pushing off tough times. So they closed by saying they look forward to the city council approving a balanced 2019 budget. Blue ribbon. The, the sunset, wow, if that would help us to get to six votes, it, you know, it's going to save us from the massacre that's going to happen between now and next week, and it is going to happen, because folks that aren't supporting, supporting revenues aren't going to magically support revenues next week. The next thing we're looking at is a million-two, folks, so just get ready for it. But to the sunset, it doesn't have to be three years, it could be one year, it could be 10 years, but at the end of the day, if we come back during the course of this next budget discussion, starting in February, I don't care if we start it in January, some people don't want to make a decision until the last hour. We can, we can say it's a sunset at next year, three years, five years, if we come back with something else, we can change that ordinance with a vote of six people. So, don't get hung up on the sunset on this. I apologize, very seldom do I talk for that long, folks. If, if there's a couple more comments, I'll probably make them. I'm really very concerned that we don't have enough people that are going to be able to get this relatively small. And I, I really wish that, that the people that got fired up over this really knew that in many cases, it was going to be 25, 30 bucks a year versus a reduction, like, like another reduction in police and fire. That's where it's going to come from, because that's the only place we have to go. And I think that it, it might have diluted some of those phone calls. So what's going to happen between now and next week is the phone calls are going to turn on about people that don't want you to cut their police and fire anymore. And for the, the people that just can't find it within themselves for this, this very modest proposal, to, to put a hole in the dyke, admit it, it doesn't get us there. Put a hole in the dyke and, and figure out some ways, in conjunction with talking to Springfield, to take some of the pressure off, to, to get us to a point where we can make those next steps. Anybody that's looking for the magic formula here, that isn't going to give an inch on revenues, no matter what, because it's the principle, and the people that also don't want public safety to get worse, it's going to get worse, folks. Public safety's getting worse. It's not a scare tactic, it's the reality. We don't have anywhere else to go. You don't want to give us any, you don't want to give us a dime. I had Councilman Grab and then Councilwoman Moore.
Mayor Artis, I appreciate your comments. It's one of the reasons I never, in past number of years, have gone to the Chamber of Commerce asking them for their support, or this mythological construct that supposedly has nothing to do with them called the BizPAC. Look into it, folks. These are the same people who have never seen a ballpark deal, or a hotel deal, or a Walmart deal, or a warehouse district deal, or a big road deal out north that they didn't like, but when it comes time for core basic services in my district, then that's a big deal. Now, all of a sudden, it's the nuclear option. Are you kidding me? What I just read off is the nuclear option, not sustaining basic, basic, reduced, stripped down, core basic services, police and fire protection in my district? Not supporting that? That's the big deal. And frankly, some of you around here strike me as being towers of gelatin, because you've been all over the map on this issue. And some of you must not have been here when motions were put forward that did not garner six votes. I made a motion to simply raise property tax, that would have negated the need for parcel tax. Not one of you seconded it. Not one of these nihilists would second it. Friedrich Nietzsche ought to get it out and give you all a copy. You stand for nothing. And I guarantee you, if we deeply cut into public safety, which is what's going to happen, even if you pass this, there is going to be a lot of hell to pay. This is a very, as the mayor has very eloquently outlined, a very elementary and basic thing to do which has minimal financial impact. Has anybody, has anybody gotten the calculations out as to what's going to happen to their insurance rates for their home? With the ever-deeper cuts that may have to be made next week, if you can't at least pass this? Because you're afraid of the damn BizPAC? Are you kidding me? Are you kidding me? Well, you'll all have to answer to the voters, and I'm going to be sitting in that second district seat that represents the very heart of this city, watching all of you at larges if all hell breaks loose, and I'll be reminding you of what you didn't produce. You didn't produce the sum of money we need to sustain core basic services, protecting our people in their neighborhoods, their homes, their schools, not to mention protecting our emergency responders who are out there first, and they're going to be out there in an even thinner capacity with these cuts. Even if we pass this, you heard what the manager said, much fewer police officers and firefighters. Unconscionable. Thank you, Mayor. I, you know, you don't speak very often, but you certainly were correct in everything you said tonight, and I'm glad you took the time to outline where we've been, and hopefully we'll get some rationality here on the council before this is all over with. Thank you.
Councilman Moore?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm not as prolific as some of my colleagues, but I will say the nuclear option that I referred to was simply the reduction of the reserves and nothing more. But as it appears that there is no appetite for that, and as my, as Councilwoman Grab indicated, there was no appetite for the property tax increase, and having no desire to see any layoffs in police and fire, as we are not seeing any from the retirements and that like, then I'm going to have to, in, in order to preserve those police and fire that are still there, who actually do have jobs, and support the 1.2 if we're not going to reduce the optional 2 million into our reserves. Thank you. If I can add one last thing, even the support of the 1.2, I just want us to continue to remember that we're not talking about this in a vacuum. We're talking about this in addition to everything else that we've piled on, and we still have the CSO to roll out next year. So even the support of this, the support of the storm water, the support of the trash, the support of dot-dot-dot, we still have CSO coming next year. So just keep that in mind. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm not seeing any more lights on this one. Last call.
Okay, so we're voting on the amended motion of Councilman Reaganbach to sunset this at three years. That motion passes with six ayes and five nos. Voting yes, Mayor Artis, councilmembers Agasson, Grab, Moore, Reaganbach, and Turner. Voting no, councilmembers Seer, Jensen, Montalongo, Euler, and Ruckregel. Madam Clerk.
18-358 is a request to adopt an ordinance levying the taxes for fiscal year 2019 for municipal purposes for the city of Peoria.
Mr. Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Item 18-358 is the property tax levy ordinance. This anticipates a total levy amount of $27.766 million, which is down from 2018 as we have seen the property tax base contract. It does keep the property tax rate at $134.76. You'll see that, as you look at the rates that we have had for prior years, this is in line with trying to keep that total property tax rate constant, which is the direction that we've been given from council.
Can I get a motion, please? Councilman Agasson motion to approve, seconded by Councilman McGrab. Is there a discussion on this item? Councilman Montalongo?
Yes, Mr. City Manager. First, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. City Manager, what was our rate last year?
I believe that the overall rate in 2017 would have been the $1.50, the dollar, if you look at the council communication, for the city rate, it was $1.12128. For the library, it was .4269. This year, as we look at that, when you add everything together, I think we're looking at it in total being right at that $1.56 level, just as it was last year.
Same as last year.
Last year.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other discussion on this item? Councilman Jensen.
Just as a follow-up, so what's the library rate going to be? Because I don't think that's on here.
The library rate is on the council communication for 2017.
Right, but for this next year?
Looking to...
To include in the $134, the library rate is, it's approximately 32 cents for the operation, and the remaining portion, the nine and a half cents, relates to the bonds issued for the library.
Okay, so it's going to go down from about 42 cents or 43 cents to 32 cents?
It'll still come back at 43 because the library bonds are automatically levied. They're not levied through this levy appropriation here. They're levied through the bond.
Okay. I'm just trying to understand then how the total tax rate is going to be the same as last year.
You have to add the bonds because you're levying property taxes to pay bonds, and you're levying about $4.2 million to pay those, to pay bond proceeds. That 4.2 million, that's going to be, that's going to be about 17 cents that gets added to that $134, or 19 cents that gets added to the $134.
Correct.
It'll still be the same, just about the same tax rate as last year at 1.56.
Correct, but we'll be collecting, we'll be collecting less because of the contraction in the tax.
Because of the lower property.
Correct.
Value. Okay, thank you.
Further discussion on this item? Seeing none, we have a motion in a second. Please cast your ballots. That motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk.
18-359 is a request to approve a resolution adopting the 2019 revised budget for the city of Peoria, and there are two handouts on your desk.
Thank you. Mr. Manager.
Thank you. You just simply have what was included in the packet. We've given everyone a copy of the budget resolution, as well as the supplemental financial tables that are included. The overall budget for the library will be $6,504,638. The overall city budget, $197,287,991. Combined, it makes a total budget of $203,792,629 in total. This budget also includes putting $2 million into fund balance in the general fund, as well as about $2.6 million across some of the other funds that we have, and that incorporates all of the issues that we've just talked about, get rolled up into the operations and spending plan for 2019.
Discussion on this item or a motion? Motion to approve, Councilmember Reaganbach, seconded by Councilmember Turner. Seeing no lights, please cast your ballots. That motion passes with six ayes, five nos. Voting no, councilmembers Seer, Jensen, Montalongo, Euler, and Ruckregel. Madam Clerk.
Yes, we would be at citizens' opportunity to address the city council.
Okay. We're at citizens' opportunity to address the council. We just ask for your name for the record, please, and we have a five-minute speaking limit.
Good evening. Been a while since I've been here, Mayor. I think I was here back in September. I'd like to discuss a couple issues. One on Springdale Cemetery. As you know, and Mr. Councilman Grab knows, I've been really involved in that for probably 30 years. I know they've got a lot of problems there. When I was out in California for the last couple of months, I seen some of the council people's things on YouTube. I got on late, watched it. I seen the manager over there at Springdale, Mark, standing up here talking about some of the cuts and things they're doing over there. Let me just say on that, that Springdale's come a long ways. I know Springdale probably better than anybody in Peoria. I used to walk it seven days a week. There's things still to this day, I could tell you about it, that people don't know. People in there, for example, I'm doing a story with my aunt, who is doing a book on Cole Younger and Frank and Jesse James. There's a connection with my family on that. My grandmother actually knew Frank James and Cole Younger, who were in Peoria in 1912. Some people, even in your library, didn't even know that. That's been checked out. A lot of history in Peoria was Springdale, and they're all in Springdale. Anyway, if you can support that, please do so. It's come a long way. He said it was between, the difference was night and day. I can tell you it's even beyond that. Is it perfect? No. It's got a lot of problems still. They've come a long ways. If you've ever been over there, it's really, really changed, and I'd hate to see it go back to what it was even 10 years ago, you know? They can use the help. So with that being said, I want to get back on the Alexa Scott campaign. When I was out in California, I talked about law enforcement, wildlife, fishing game, game wardens, police officers, detectives, firemen. I was not too far from the wildfires out there, just north of Sacramento. My daughter lives out there. And we were at a gathering with officers there. They were helping young kids, programs for keeping kids off of drugs and stuff like that, a good program. And those officers were telling me about how they go out and search for missing people, runaways, things like that. And I want you to know right off the hand, I'm not a person that's against law enforcement. I'm all for it. You need them. You need them. But I will say, when mistakes are made, they got to be called out. The chief said here in one of his interviews with you people, he said here and told you several times in his press conference that he had, the FBI was involved and things like that. I would ask this of the chief, he's not here tonight, if you would address this for the mother's sake, for April Allen. If the FBI is involved, please have them give a press conference, or at least give them the acknowledgement to let them know it won't hurt the case. I was told it can't interfere with the case by them doing that. I know of several other cases that they have done that. If you would acknowledge that, let them know, that way the mother could know that. Have them speak and give some kind of, you know, word that they're involved in the case. He said that out of his own words. These are not my words. These were his chief. If he could do that, that would be great. That way the mother can have a little bit of peace of mind that someone, just a peace of mind that someone is investigating it outside of the Peoria Police Department. And with that said, thank you, and everybody have a good Christmas. God bless.
Madam Clerk.
We have an executive session.
Mr. Leist.
Yes, Your Honor. Pursuant to 2C2 of the Open Meetings Act, we need to have a discussion relative to collective bargaining matters, which exempts 2C2, as well as 2C21, which exempts the discussion of previously closed minutes.
We have a motion to go into executive session by Councilmember Reaganbach, seconded by Councilmember Turner. Please cast your ballots. That motion passes unanimously. We have a motion to adjourn by Councilman, Councilman Agasson, seconded by Councilman Moore. Please cast your ballots. That motion passes unanimously. We would like to thank our listening audience. The special budget meeting of the city council is adjourned.